An all call to order the City-County Council meeting for Monday, July 15, 2019. Before I proceed, I would like to welcome our newest member, Counselor Keith Graves, from District 13.
I would also like to read a statement before a moment of silence in respect to the loss of a great moral world leader, Eva Moses Core. And the reason that I want to talk about Eva Moses Core is because of what she stood for globally when it comes to forgiveness. And I ask my fellow counselors to pause with me this evening to send up our thanks for the life and work of fellow Hoosier Eva Core. In 1944, at the age of 10, Eva and her twin Miriam were taken to Auschwitz where they were subjected to horrific violence at the hands of Nazi war criminals, especially Dr. Joseph Mengele. When the camp was liberated in January of 1945, the twins discovered they were the sole survivors of what had been a very loving family of six. Orphaned, ill, and just 11 years old, the two girls migrated to Israel and then to the United States. And it was our blessing that Eva Core settled in Terre Haute, Indiana. That she had survived the Holocaust at all is miracle enough. But Eva Core went on to create another miracle when in the early 1990s, she announced her decision to forgive the Nazis, even to forgive Mengele himself. Eva believed with every fiber of her being, she said that every human being has the right to live without the pain of the past. Forgiveness, Eva said, set her free from pain. She called it her miracle medicine. It is free, it works, and it has no side effects. So last week, after decades of traveling the world with her message of forgiveness, Eva passed away during her annual trip to Auschwitz. And until her last moment on the earth, she was working to educate others about the tragic impact of hate and the blessings of forgiveness. May we all continue to share her message and may Eva, at last, rest in peace. Please join me for a moment of silence in her honor.
We will begin our meeting with a prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Counselor Oliver.
Mr. President, fellow counselors with us this evening is the pastor of Mount Olive Missionary Baptist Church. We give a prayer, Mr. Pastor Paul Z. Liggins. Pastor Liggins.
May we pray. Eternal God, our Father, we come today recognizing who you are in our lives. We thank you for being the God of creation. We thank you for being the God of heaven and earth. And we thank you for being God of our partisanship. We come today thanking you for our mayor, our city council and leaders, and those who make our city better. And then we come today, dimly Father, just thanking you for allowing them to be the people to lead our city with prudence and with patience, courage, and with compassion. And then we look to you to be the answer for our agonies, the bond for our bruises, the cure-all for our calamities, being the deliverer from our distress, eraser for our errors, fixing for our faults, grace for our gloom, help for our helplessness, and then identify with our affirmities. And then we thank you for giving us joy for our journey. We thank you and we give your name praise. These blessings we ask in the matchless and wonderful name of Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Mr. President, with us this evening is the historic Fort Benjamin Harrison American Legion Post 510 color guard. We are honored to have the historic Fort Benjamin Harrison American Legion Post 510 color guard made up of color guard captain Hal Daniels, United States Army veteran Paul Norton, United States Air Force retired, Wayne Yakovic, United States Air Force retired, and Anthony Crozier, United States Army veteran, here to present and post the colors. So please stand while the historic Fort Benjamin Harrison Post 510 presents and posts the colors. When you hear the command, "present," when you hear the command, "present arms," we will cite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Order, arms! Order, arms! Detail, up! Present, arms!
Pride of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms! Post the colors!
There are 24 members present. Counselor Scales has asked to be excused for this evening due to an illness. The next item on our agenda is introduction of guests and visitors. Counselor Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to welcome fellow Southside sider here this evening, Paul Inay.
Counselor Muscarry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce Troop 174, Nick Elias and Max Smith.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With us tonight is Pike Township trustee Annette Johnson.
Counsel Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to acknowledge David Bride, the president of Central Label Union here in Indiana, and also Far East Side. Can you stand and be recognized tonight if you're in attendance? You represent the Far East Side tonight. Stand up.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize Ron G. from the Far East Side as well, specifically, Ron G. uses his story to curb gun violence, and I'd like to give him a special recognition. I also want to recognize the world's greatest campaign manager, Ashley Gervitz.
Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to take a moment to recognize Greg Stowers, Quanis International, and a very strong leader in our community. Greg, if you'd stand up and spin and say hello to everybody.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd also like to acknowledge former counselor Doris Smith McNeil, police, who's with us
Counsel Gray.
I'd like to recognize Joe Turner from Pike Township, longtime Democrat.
Counsel Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to recognize the former president of the Martindale-Brightwood One Voice, Ms.
All right, very good. The next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City-County Council and Police, Fire, and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District councils will be held in the City-County Building in the council chambers on Monday, July 15, 2019, at 7:00 PM. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before the regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osely, President, City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, I caused to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Monday, June 17, 2019, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal numbers 223, 223, 225, and 256 through 257, 2019, or 259, 2019. Said hearing to be held on Monday, July 15, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Public Assembly Room of the City-County Council, I mean, City-County Building. Respectfully, Sarita Hughes, Clerk of the City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, I caused to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Monday, July 8, 2019, a copy of a notice of public hearing on Middle Mile Infrastructure LLC's application for a public right-of-way franchise. Said hearing to be held on Thursday, July 18, 2019, at 5:30 PM in room 260 of the City-County Building. Respectfully, Sarita Hughes, Clerk of the City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, I caused to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, July 12, 2019, a copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal number 275, 2019. Said hearing to be held on Monday, July 22, 2019, at 5:30 PM in room 260 of the City-County Building. Respectfully, Sarita Hughes, Clerk of the City-County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved of my signature and delivered this day to the Clerk of the City-County Council, Sarita Hughes, the following ordinances. Fiscal ordinance number 10, general ordinance numbers 34 through 45, special ordinance numbers 6 and 7, general resolution numbers 17 through 20, special resolution numbers 22 through 26. Joseph H. Hoxette, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent?
Consent.
And the next item on our agenda is approval of the journals for June 3, 2019. Do I have consent?
Consent.
We'll now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials, special resolutions, and council resolutions. And the first item on our agenda is proposal number 269, which honors Gary Johnson for 40 years of dedicated service in ministry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to postpone 269 and 279 till the next one.
It's moved and seconded? Is there a second?
Second.
All right.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, very good. The next item on our agenda then is proposal number 280, which recognizes Indiana K-9 Assistant Network, Inc.
Okay, you guys, you guys, come back here. Just the dogs up front. You guys come back here. Sorry, it's always, I'd say it's like herding cats, but...
It's like herding dogs.
It's like herding dogs. Thank you, Mr. President. This is City-County Special Resolution Number 29. Got a very exciting program going on here in Indianapolis. It's a special resolution recognizing Indiana K-9 Assistant Network, or IndyCAN. Whereas, the Indiana K-9 Assistant Network, Inc., ICAN, was founded in 2002 and is the only accredited service dog training program in Indiana. ICAN trains and places assistance dogs with people living with disabilities and provides foundational life skills to inmates throughout their experiences as trainers. And whereas, IndyCAN, or ICAN, provides an opportunity in partnership with the Department of Labor for inmates to gain certification in dog training. And whereas, dogs are amazing creatures and their gifts to humanity are perpetual loyalty, unconditional love, grace, and faithful service. And whereas, for over 17 years, ICAN successfully placed dogs in relationships with children, adults, and veterans living with disabilities. And whereas, incarcerated individuals have gained self-respect, confidence, and imperative life skills by training dogs for their life of service. And whereas, ICAN desires to unleash new possibilities for individuals with disabilities and their families, and for individuals who experience incarceration. And whereas, through ICAN, program individuals can discover a new sense of self. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City-County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section 1, the Indianapolis City Council proudly recognizes the work of the Indiana K-9 Assistance Network, Inc., for their commitment to providing training to assistance dogs and foundational life skills to inmates. Section 2, the council extends its appreciation for the work that ICAN does and wishes them continued success. And I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Back to the speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members. Again, not only does this have a component of dogs, which is always going to be something that I'm going to be working on, but it also solves two desperate needs that we have in our community, to provide service animals for persons with disabilities and job skill training and self-esteem building programs for persons who are currently incarcerated. And I would like them to speak a little, are you going to speak? Okay, them to speak a little bit about the program further. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you for allowing us to be here. I am Gillian Ashton, and I serve the organization as its president and CEO. And so thank you so much for allowing us to be here. We, as Zach said, Councilman Adamson, sorry, said we are about 17 years strong, and we've been able to partner dogs throughout that history, and we just continue to do so. Right now, we have 55 inmates that are associated with our program, and we have about 52 dogs currently in the program, and two litters that were just born in the last three weeks. So the new generation keeps coming, and we just continue to work to get these service dogs in the hands of individuals who need them most, but also we like to celebrate the human-animal bond as well. So thank you again for allowing us to be here, and we are grateful for your support. So thank you.
These are your copies.
Great, thank you so much for sharing, Karen. Thank you. You too, thank you. Thank you. Do you have a bowline?
Okay. Thank you. I only have a few of them.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Sorry, Gillian, my goodness. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Good job. Stay high.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 281, which honors Derek Thomas on his retirement from WRTV 6.
Mr. President, I move proposal 281 to the next full council meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposal number 226, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal 226, 2019 approves the mayor's appointment of Brenda Keller to serve as director of Indianapolis Marion County Forensic Services Agency. Ms. Keller stated that she has been with the forensic services agency since August 2000. She was initially hired as drug chemist and was promoted to quality assurance manager, where she spent several years. Ms. Keller said that she had a dual role as quality assurance manager and deputy director under the former director. She also says she is now the director of the forensic services agency. Counselor Simpson moves, seconded by Counselor Muscarry, to send proposal 226 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. Motion carried by vote of 6 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Other comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal numbers 274 through 277 refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Proposal number 274, introduced by Counselor Osely, amends the Marion County Auditor's endorsement fee to comply with Indiana Code. Proposal number 275, introduced by Counselor Osely, approves and ratifies the declaratory resolution and economic development plan of the Metropolitan Development Commission for the 241 North Penn Economic Development Area, and declaring that the area be designated as an allocation area. Proposal number 276, introduced by Counselor Osely, approves the issuance of economic development tax increment revenue bonds for Charles Street Development Company, LLC, in a maximum aggregate principal amount not to exceed $9,852,000 to finance the construction of a 13-story mixed-use development consisting of approximately 213 residential units, approximately 27,400 square feet of combined retail and office space, and approximately 214 parking spots located at 421 North Pennsylvania Street in District 11, and approves and authorizes other actions in respect thereto. Proposal number 277, introduced by counselors Lewis and Fanning, amends the code with respect to the consolidated zoning and subdivision ordinance, IndyReZone, to replace the method of record-keeping and maintenance in order to allow for easier identification for constituents and modification by the city and the technical correction of five individual subdivisions. Proposal number 278, introduced by Counselor Osely, refers to the Rules and Public Policy Committee, approves a transfer of $788,366 in the 2019 budget of the Information Services Agency Information Services Fund to cover an unanticipated increase in the Infrastructure Managed Service Contract, which is critical to the management of city and county information technology needs. Proposal number 282, introduced by Counselor Robinson, referred to the Administration and Finance Committee, reappoints Kai Johnson to the Equal Opportunity Advisory Board. Proposal numbers 283 through 285 refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, and were introduced by Counselor Osely. Proposal numbers 306 through 309 were also referred to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee and were introduced by Counselor Lewis. Proposal number 283 appoints Karen Calistino Horseman to the Animal Care Advisory Board. Proposal number 284 nominates David Bride for appointment to the Economic Development Commission. Proposal 285 nominates Charles Garcia for appointment to the Economic Development Commission. Proposal number 306 appoints Jason Larison to the Indianapolis City Market Corporation Board of Directors. Proposal number 307 appoints Portia Bailey Bernard to the Indianapolis City Market Corporation Board of Directors. Proposal number 308 appoints Barney Levingood to the Indianapolis City Market Corporation Board of Directors. Proposal number 309 appoints Janice Golston Dunlap to the Metropolitan Board of Zoning Appeals, Division 3. Proposal number 310, introduced by Counselor Robinson, referred to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, appoints Kevin Riley to the Marion County Community Corrections Advisory Board. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is special orders, priority business. Proposal numbers 286 through 294 are all rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission. If no counselor wishes to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? Seeing none, the proposals will pass into law. Proposal numbers 296 through 305 are all rezoning ordinances certified for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission. If no counselor wishes to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration, the proposals will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? Seeing none, the proposals will pass into law. Mr. Vice President, I personally move that proposal number 295, 2019, is a rezoning case 2018, CZN 847, located at 2069, 2101, 2222, 35, Montcom Street, be scheduled for a hearing before this council at its next general meeting on Monday, August 12, 2019, at 7:00 PM, and that the general council read the announcement of such hearing and enter same in the minutes of this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. President. The motion having been received, is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Do we need, we need to go to the board? All right, we'll go to the board for the votes. All right, we'll go to the board for the votes. One moment, please. There we go. Nope. That's not it.
Counsel Kim.
Thank you, Mr. President. This council will hold a public hearing on rezoning petition number two thousand and eighteen, CZN eight-four-seven, council proposal number two-ninety-five, two thousand and nineteen, at its next regular meeting on Monday, August twelfth, two thousand and nineteen. Such meeting to convene at seven PM in these council chambers in the city county building. This petition seeks to rezone five-point-seven-six acres at two thousand and sixty-nine, two thousand and one oh one, two-two-hundred, and two-two-thirty-five, Mont Calm Street, from the I-three, W-one district to the I-four, W-one classification, with certain uses eliminated. Written objections that are filed with the clerk of the council shall be heard at such time, or the hearing may be continued from time to time as found necessary by the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kim. The next item on our agenda is special orders, public hearing. Proposal number two-two-three, two thousand and nineteen, refer to Rules and Public Policy Committee, Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number two-twenty-three, two thousand and nineteen, approves bond and/or lease borrowings of the Capital Improvement Board of Managers related to Bankers Life Fieldhouse. Andy Malon, Executive Director, Capital Improvement Board, stated it is the largest part of the capital program associated with the new twenty-five-year Pacers Sports Entertainment Agreement with the city of Indianapolis. Mr. Malon indicated that proposal number two-twenty-three authorizes CIB to borrow two-hundred-and-seventy million dollars in capital project funds from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-two, and a hundred-and-forty million in refinancing of existing Bankers Life Fieldhouse debt. Capital improvements from two thousand and twenty to two thousand and twenty-two include improvements to the event level, lower level, entry level, pavilion, main concourse, south balcony, fieldhouse exterior, projection system, and office space in lower suites. Counsel Lewis moves, seconded by Counselor McQuillan, to send proposal number two-twenty-three, two thousand and nineteen, to the full council with a due pass as amended recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of eight to zero, Mr. President, ISO move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors?
Mr. President.
Counselor Simpson.
Is there someone from the CIB here to come down?
Is there anyone from the CIB in the room?
Hi, Andy Malon, Executive Director of the Capital Improvement Board.
Can you explain to the listening audience about ordinance two-two-three, the mechanism, the funding mechanism, and what it's going for?
Sure. Two-twenty-three is for renovations to the Bankers Life Fieldhouse. It provides for a project fund of two-hundred-and-seventy million dollars to complete the public renovations. That's the first part. Second part is a hundred-and-forty million, which is a refinancing of current Bankers Life Fieldhouse debt, and the goal being providing an option so that if we can simplify the bond issuance by refinancing that existing debt and doing it all together.
Thank you.
Are there additional questions from counselors on proposal two-two-three? All right, seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to proposal number two-two-three?
Larry Vaughn, please. This is why people need to come down here more and see how money is being appropriated for the Pacers game than athletics in general in this city. I know it's a big part of our economy now, and I know we have to help it a little bit, but tonight, they are actually giving the Pacers, for their new home at Bankers Field Life, over a half a billion dollars. Now, none of this money is going to be paid back because it never have been paid back. So, I think that we need sports here in town. It's a good deal. But like anybody that has a business, if they don't fund that business and come to us and raise our taxes, our streets are in deplorable condition, and we're given tonight a half a billion dollars to the Indianapolis Pacers and whoever else might want to go over to Bankers Fieldhouse to have an event or anything else, we are actually subsidizing them and subsidizing the season tickets of Pacer, of fans. I have seen one Pacer game the whole time I was, I've been living in this city and that they've been here. That was the Milwaukee Bucks. They got beat. So, I think that we're doing a lot of pipe dreaming here tonight. We're spending a lot of money. I know it's too late to turn back now, but I just hope that people don't lose interest, actually lose interest in professional sports, the way the actual athletes are acting up now, taking a knee and so forth. It's getting more and more so that people will actually sit at home and watch it on their entertainment center. So, we're giving a half a billion dollars tonight to promote sports here in this town, and I don't know if it's really worth it.
Is there anyone else in the room with an interest in speaking on proposal number two-two-three? All right, seeing none, additional comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Counsel Graves. The motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number two-two-five, refer to Rules and Public Policy Committee, Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number two-twenty-five approves an additional appropriation of twenty-nine million dollars in the two thousand and nineteen budget of the Capital Improvement Board of Managers, operating in bond funds for certain payments related to the updated Fieldhouse operating agreement. Mr. Malon stated that the proposal's sister proposal to number two-twenty-three is additional appropriation to funds that CIB currently possess in their bank accounts. Stated that twenty million dollars be used to cover design and consulting contracts, as well as long lead-time purchase contracts, and nine million dollars will be used to pay off a loan from the treasurer of state. He stated that twenty-five-year contract will not bring added taxes or fees. Counsel Lewis moves, seconded by Counselor McQuillan, to send proposal number two-twenty-five to the full council with a due pass recommendation. That vote carried by eight to zero. Mr. President, tonight I've got a friendly amendment. I move to amend section two of proposal number two-twenty-five by deletion of the language that is stricken through. In addition, the underlined language and the highlighted portion, to read as follows. It's a simple clerical adjustment to take the language from operating fund to bond fund. Mr. President, ISO move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Seeing none, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to proposal number Seeing no one, additional comments or any comments from counselors? Seeing none, then, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to zero.
Mr. President, I now move proposal number two-twenty-five, as amended, to the full council.
Motion's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Hit the board for our vote, thank you. The motion carries twenty-four to zero. Counselor?
I'm good.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is proposal two-five-six, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal two-five-six, two thousand and nineteen, approves an additional appropriation of two million, nine-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty dollars in two thousand and nineteen budget of Indianapolis Fire Department's Fire General Fund, and transfers two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars in the Fire Community Fund to purchase self-contained breathing apparatus equipment for repairs to the wellness center and for additional repairs and maintenance to fire stations, supported by a collection from the state of Indiana into the city's Public Safety Income Tax Fund. Dawn Sykes Randall, the CFO of Indianapolis Fire Department, stated that IFD has requested an additional appropriation of two-point-nine million dollars in the Fire General Fund. Of this two-point-nine million, two-point-seven, will be used to complete the purchase of self-contained breathing apparatus equipment and will be distributed to all operational firefighters within IFD. Ms. Sykes Randall also stated that the final request is a transfer with existing appropriation within the Fire Community Fund of two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars from the character four to character three to make repairs to some stations due to water damage. IFD Chief Ernest Malone stated that the equipment retail for about seven-point-eight million. He said that they were able to evaluate and test the equipment, and went out to bid through the city's process, and the bid came in at four-point-seven million. Counsel Fanning moves, seconded by Counselor Mascarini, to send proposal two-five-six to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of sixty to zero, Mr. President, ISO move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right, seeing none?
Yes.
Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak to proposal number two-five-six?
Larry Vaughn, please. You know, this is what I mean. We are having to transfer money from different departments, from the general fund, all to public safety. Why? Because the equipment's breaking down. This weekend in my community, there was over seventeen runs for people to administer Narcam. Every time those trucks leave the house, it's sixty-five-hundred dollars. They go out and administer one shot of Narcam and then return to the station. Now, they, they take their calls in the order that they're called in. So, if your father or your mother's having a heart attack and somebody's ODing on heroin, they gotta go to the junkie first. So, I'm just saying, we need to put an end to this. I mean, if you're gonna have somebody administer Narcam here in this, in this city, you need to have a special situation set up where they can have a car to go out, maybe two medical professionals to administer a shot of Narcam, and stop charging sixty-five-hundred dollars every time that ambulance leaves the station, every time that fire truck leaves the station, sixty-five-hundred dollars. You could do it for about a hundred-and-twenty dollars. So, you need to look into that, and maybe we won't be transferring funds to fix broke-down equipment as we are doing right now tonight. So, public safety, I think that in the future, ever since proposal one-oh, one-twelve have been a sucking of the funding, funding going straight to the opioid crisis, going straight to administer Narcam. Last year, over three million dollars in our budget went to service Narcam junkies, and now, it's just increasing every year. So, we need to change the policy.
All right, is there anyone else in the room with an interest in proposal number two-five-six? All right, seeing none, additional comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll go to the board for our vote. What, just a moment. Counsel Jackson.
I just wanna say, when we refer to people's families as junkies, I mean, they are living human beings. It is a disease, and we could refrain from that.
You're here.
It's a real disease and problem like no other. Thank you.
Counselors Oliver and Wesler. The motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number two-five-seven, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal two-five-seven, two thousand and nineteen, approves an additional appropriation of one-hundred thousand dollars in two thousand and nineteen budget of IMPD's General Fund and a transfer of one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in the federal law enforcement fund to outfit police pursuit vehicles with equipment and for the purchase of miscellaneous vehicles at public auction for undercover investigations, supported by a corresponding revenue transfer from the city rainy day fund. Janice Mitchell, CFO of IMPD, said that this is a two-part fiscal ordinance. First part is related to simple transfer of one-hundred thousand dollars from character three to character four to purchase vehicles at auction for undercover activities. She said that the second part, one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, moved from IMPD's General Fund to outfit one-hundred-and-eleven of their vehicles with lights and different equipment. Rick Snyder, President FOP, said this is, they are supporter of this proposal. Counselor Simpson moves, seconded by Counselor Mascarini, to send proposal two-five-seven to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion carried by a vote of sixty to zero, Mr. President, ISO move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, is there anyone else in the, in the room that would like to speak to proposal number two-five-seven? Seeing no one, any additional comments from counselors? Then let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-four to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number two-five-eight, refer to Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee. Chairman Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal two-five-eight, two thousand and nineteen, approves an additional appropriation totaling nine-hundred thousand dollars in two thousand and nineteen budget of the Office of Health and Public Safety, the consolidated city-county fund, to fund two peacekeepers focused on juvenile referrals, various food assistance programs, and technical assistance for continued neighborhood outreach. Paul Babcock, the Director of Office of Public Health and Safety, gave a brief PowerPoint presentation in detail. The total fiscal is nine-hundred thousand dollars. Two parts were the food policy and programming, which broken down into four categories: the Lift Pilot Support, the Food Champions Program, the Mobile Food Market, and the Food Compass Support. In addition, the violence reduction support, which was two additional peacekeepers and technical assistance. Mr. Babcock also introduced the Community Resource Coordinators, the peacekeepers, to continue with the presentation. Their part was the community engagement, which included neighborhood enhancement, team outreach, HAVO Emergency Response Resource Fair, public safety walks, no more red dots, violence interruption training, and community violence intervention, which targets audiences' probation, a mother's voice, redemption story from former gang members. Also includes Safe Saturdays, which includes Indy Park expanded hours and the Boys and Girls Club expanded hours as well. Chairman Robinson asked if Mr. Babcock is working with Council President Osely on his food policy initiative. Mr. Babcock answered in the affirmative, said that they will be meeting to discuss how to implement the program in the coming weeks. Chairman Robinson also asked in regards to the peacekeepers initiative, when they will see measurable outcomes. Mr. Babcock said that they're planning to present some preliminary data in the next month. Colleen Fanning, Counselor Fanning, asked with regards to the Lift program, are they contributing to the program or is the city contracted with Lift? Mr. Babcock said the Lift is contributing. He believes the contribution is somewhere between ten to twenty thousand dollars. Counsel Oliver asked Mr. Babcock to explain the ride-share program with the Lift. Mr. Babcock said that this program has a subsidy built in for families in a certain geographical area to help provide ride-share at a reduced cost to a grocery store in the area. Counselor Simpson asked, how many of these programs are for six months or is this for a long-term program? Mr. Babcock said that the Lift program is for six months, the Food Champions program is for twelve weeks, the Mobile Food Market is a one-time supportive cost from the city, and the Food Compass Support is a one-time contribution over a one- or two-year period, depending on the marketing plan developed, to be able to create a sustainable platform. Fatty Kudor, the Controller of the Office of Finance and Management, said that the programs have been designed by OPHS and the funding became available from the state of Indiana, so in the city's income tax that is held by the state. Mr. Kudor stated that the program presented will be accommodated to two thousand and twenty budget without any negative impact. Counselor Simpson moves, seconded by Counselor Mascarini, to send proposal two-five-eight to the full council with a due pass recommendation. Motion carried by a vote of sixty to zero, Mr. President, ISO move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Did you have a comment? Counsel Robinson.
Mr. President, I do have a statement I want to share.
Please.
President Osely and fellow counselors and those in the audience, research from UPI tells us that an estimated two-hundred thousand residents of Indianapolis live in food deserts. Let's be clear, we don't need a study to tell us about this, we already know. We have neighbors and constituents who may not know where their next meal is coming from. Hunger and food access are serious issues. Hunger and food access are serious issues and concerns that deserve this body's full attention this evening. And that's why the Indianapolis City-County Council has worked with the community and the mayor's office to prioritize efforts to address these issues both in short term and long term. Proposal 258 will work to address the short-term needs of our community by supporting those neighborhoods-based efforts already underway, and there are many that are underway as well. Proposal 258 includes an expansion of the Food Champions Program administered by the Indy Food Council and supports the efforts by Mount Carmel Church on the east side to work with Lift to improve food access. We have the opportunity tonight to vote to put resources directly into shovel-ready projects that will begin in the coming days and weeks, not months or years from now. The funds we have available to use are released tonight with a positive vote. I'll repeat that. The funds that we have available are available to release tonight with a positive vote this evening. They come from a one-time source, just a down payment for a long-term sustainable source of funding. This is the beginning of a much-needed conversation. Mayor Joe Hawke said and the council of players, their 25-year commitment to Indy Food and Securities in Indianapolis, and that long-term approach will include the necessary dialogue with our neighbors, all neighbors, to find substantial, sustainable out solutions to problems of hunger, food insecurity, food deserts, and food access. I know that we all look forward to such a conversation. This issue is too important for partisan politics. Let me repeat. This issue is too important for partisan politics. It's also worth noting that proposal 258 passed unanimously out of committee, and most importantly, with bipartisan support of the entire committee that was present. My colleagues, the Hawke administration and I have met with and heard our constituents since the passage of 258 out of committee. The council has a commitment from the Hawke administration to make adjustments on how these funds are being allocated in response to some of the concerns we heard from our neighbors. Counselor Jackson also this evening will be presenting the introduction of an amendment that further includes the community's input. There are many ideas out there on how to approach this issue, some with merit and some not. The programs funded by 258 are ready to begin helping 200,000 residents in our city tonight or tomorrow morning who face insecurity problems in our city. Let us put partisan politics aside and vote yes to help them immediately. My fellow counselors, I ask you to support 258 as is written and amended by Counselor Jackson. Thank you, Mr. President.
Good job. Good job.
Mr. President, at this time, I'd like to call up Director Paul Babcock. I do have a few questions for him before we open up to the entire body, Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Babcock, Director Babcock, would you come forward?
Thank you, Mr. Babcock, welcome.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
I just have a few questions as the chair of the committee before we open up to the entire body. Can you give us a brief background about how we got here today? I know you had Shelley was here recently, who just left the administration, about the years that were in place, that were put in place to get this to the proposal to where we are today.
Yes, thank you. First and foremost, members of the City-County Council, thank you for having me up here today to answer questions as well as for hearing our proposal. To your specific question, Chairman Robinson or Counselor Robinson, the projects here have been in works for at least the last three years. Shelley Subtles came along in 2016, and her job was to be, to wake up every day and work for advancing food access in our community as well as eliminating food insecurity. And as she began to go out in the community and meet community members, they began to work together to develop projects. And the projects in front of you today that are to be funded are projects that have been in the works, that have been started by community members, some of them behind me here today for the last three years. And it is a great pleasure to be in front of you today, to be able to advocate for shovel-ready projects designed to help every member of our community, especially those who are less fortunate. And so that's really how we've gotten here today from a broad overview, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Babcock. Couple more questions, Mr. President, if you would indulge me.
Please.
There's been a lot of discussion about the mobile app and the use of the mobile app and why it's necessary. There are discussions about something similar being in place. Can you speak to the necessity of this mobile app that's on this agenda?
Yep, of course. So, the Food Compass, as we titled it, has been a partnership and a project between the city of Indianapolis, the Indy Hunger Network, which is a coalition of food service organizations, entities designed to help individuals who have food access and food insecurity issues. It has been going and been in the works since approximately 2017. It was a project that came out of a number of listening sessions and design sessions hosted at the Central Library, and it brought together food advocates, employees in state government, nonprofit organizations who work in this field, including Indiana 211 and Indiana Connect to Help 211, who are partners in this project. In fact, maybe a month ago, I recently signed an M O U with Connect to Help to help share data to make this Food Compass a success. So broadly speaking, I think everyone knows that there's an issue with food insecurity and food access in our community. I can just tell you a couple of statistics, but I think what's of critical importance is that 22% of Marion County residents have need for food assistance. And there are approximately 47,000 individuals who miss meals or eat less than they normally would because they can't afford an adequate diet. And this compass, this Food Compass that we titled it, is designed to help them get access to that food right away. So it serves two purposes. One, it provides geolocation for an individual to know where a food pantry may or may not be, as well as the requirements of that food pantry, so to avoid the fact that someone just shows up at a locked door trying to get a hot meal. And at the same time, it provides access to hot meals. So if you happen to be in a part of town that you're not familiar with, you may have some sort of financial issues or some other issues going on, and you need to get access both to a hot meal for your families, potentially a food pantry, this Food Compass helps direct you there. It does learn from your responses. It operates across all messaging platforms, and it's an innovative solution that we believe will help not only get folks access to food pantries as well as hot meals, but finally, I think most importantly, of those 47,000 individuals who are not able to access a meal because they can't afford it, a good proportion of them, I'm sorry, are also eligible for federal financial assistance, which includes SNAP, TANF, WIC, and other such benefits. This app helps address stigmas and concerns that may be associated with, as well as resource issues of traveling down to an office and then being denied because you may not qualify. This helps you determine and learn whether or not you're qualified before you show up, and then helps you navigate that system. And I think additionally, most importantly, in our community, it does help relieve some of the strain that we see faced on our partners at Indiana 211 and Indiana Connect to Help, because it does take some of that burden off of them receiving phone calls to answer questions. This is not an end-all-to-be-all, but it is a step in the right direction to help address food and access food insecurity, as well as, I think most importantly, that everyone in this room, as well as the council, should understand that Indiana historically, Indianapolis as well, receives a net loss when it comes to our federal financial assistance, so our tax dollars that go towards supporting our families in need. And that total estimate is $60 million. And so, an investment in this Food Compass can help decrease that amount, so that we are investing not only in families, we're investing in our grocery stores, and we're continuing to invest in our communities to help people get access to healthy food so that we have better public health outcomes and that our citizens are receiving the meals that they are not only entitled to, but the meals that they deserve.
Thank you. One more, Mr. Babcock, for me. This is gonna be a two-part question.
Yes, sir.
There's been also a lot of discussion throughout the community about one or two particular locations receiving the funding. So can you speak to the issue of spending most of these resources on one location? And lastly, the chances of a food desert, I'm sorry, a full-service grocery store actually coming back into the community?
So, there's, I think, two responses to that. First and foremost, we've heard from the different members of the community, not only on the council, but as well as out in the community, and we are working with Lift, and I think that's what you're referencing, sir, to expand the Lift ride-share program to other parts of the community?
No, my question was regarding the funding for this proposal being diverted to one location as a grocer.
Okay, so, well, we are working with different partners to design a mobile market, but at the same time, I think to your point, and then to your second question, now that I have some clarity, the city does provide technical assistance to grocers across the community, and additionally, we do have the opportunity for folks who have, similar to Cleo's Bodega, develop really community-based, community-supported grocery stores with quality business plans. Recently, just opened that. And I think, you know, as we've always committed, we are here to help partners across the community. To your second question, the research seems to suggest, and I think, you know, what we hope to do with this money is to really, to understand it, but the brick-and-mortar grocery store as we know it is slowly but surely changing. It is becoming much more amorphous, and by that, I mean, I think everyone knows that Amazon is a very large logistics company. They are working with our partners in DC to be able to accept EBT benefits online. And if that comes to fruition, that will change drastically how groceries are delivered in our country. And so what we are doing, and what we've had discussions with the council, is how do we get access to those pilot projects? Because right now, the federal government is operating a number of SNAP acceptance online stores in pilot cities, and with this appropriation, I think with the potential amendment, we would work towards that. And so, the goal, sir, would be to ensure that as the grocery business changes, that the city of Indianapolis meets that change head-on and is able to then ensure that our families and our citizens are fed, though I can't speak to what will happen in the future with brick-and-mortar stores.
Thank you, Mr. Babcock. President, thank you for indulging me. I think our fellow Counselor Jackson may have an amendment, so thank you, Mr. President.
Do you have something, Counselor Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I'd like to read a statement first and then an amendment. Dear community, I'm here tonight to address proposal 258. I've had the opportunity to listen to residents and stakeholders' concerns regarding the context and content of proposal 258 at community meetings, town halls, residents and stakeholders' calls, and going door-to-door in some of the apartment communities. I made a public statement that I was against proposal 258 in its current form. The community was not given the opportunity to hear the proposal before it was introduced to the public, therefore, taking the time to listen and address concerns is important. I informed residents that if they provided me amendments, I would be an advocate for their voice. I was provided two separate amendments. The first from the Far East Side Community Council that addressed five proposed amendments. And the second one was from the Economic Freedom Fighters of Indiana proposing one of Far East Side grocery stores to receive designated total amount over $500,000 and allow residents to patronize and possibly receive deliveries. The challenge with this proposal is twofold, or really threefold. Its goal wasn't effectively delivered to the public and community, and that it doesn't have the funds included to support existing or new grocery stores or food markets with subsidies or money to assist in creating sustainable food options while reducing food deserts and food insecurities and allowing the money to stay in the community, which sparks growth, economic development, and sustainability. However, proposal 258 intent is a short-term intent, the ability to provide a pilot program or pilot programs to collect data and test what will work to obtain and implement funding for long-term sustainability. The mayor's office has agreed to go on record to work with the council and community to address money for the 2020 budget and commit to creating a long-term sustainable policy and plan to reduce food deserts and food insecurities in our community, city, and county. At this time, that will address two of the five amendments that the Far East Side Council discussed, and I'll just read those real briefly, what they asked for. We would like to see funding for grocery store deliveries. This will solve two major issues with the Lift pilot, parents without car seats and people with disabilities. Number two, we would like to see people who are already on Far East Side getting funding to continue and span the good work that has already been done. Example, mobile markets, team up with black farmers co-op, as well as the mobile fresh food option. Number three, we completely agree with Counselor Jackson on making Hispanic grocery stores within our community more accessible for our English-speaking community. Number four, we would like to see possible funding for a new grocery store or bodega and programming that can teach residents who are interested in starting these kinds of efforts. And number five, our community is completely opposed to the app. We would love to see that funding goes towards one of the previously mentioned ideas. So that you know, what we want to do is, at this point, I'm gonna offer amendment here in a moment to address two of the five concerns, because again, this is not a long-term proposal. It was designed to be a pilot program with short-term solutions to collect data to determine what can become sustainable. So two of them was being able, my colleagues agreed to that, and we were able to advocate for that in there, and you'll hear it in a moment. What we really want to do is provide immediate access for food to the mouths of our families and our babies who need it. There's over 100, there's really over 200,000, but the ones I'm specifically thinking of, 100,000 to be able to take advantage of some of these programs immediately. So know that, so know that even though the amendments don't address all the concerns of proposal 258, you have a voice and you have been heard. The public and community have a seat and a voice at the table. Hold tight. We will be back to continue conversations to discuss what the 2020 budget shouldn't tell. With that said, at this time, I would like to make a motion to amend proposal 258, 2019. Motion to amend proposal 258, 2019, Mr. Chairman. I respectfully move to amend proposal 258, 2019 by adding the underlying language and deleting the language that is stricken through in the highlighted portion to read as follows: To include but not limit to expansion of home delivery service for groceries, Lift Pilot Support, Food Champions Program, Mobile Food Markets, and marketing for Food Compass App. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Are there comments? Counselor Jackson?
Thank you again for allowing me to speak. So, public and those on the Far East Side, what that means in a whole is, the money is lumped in one large sum. We still have the opportunity to say what goes, if not this amount for Food Compass or this amount for mobile. Your voices still continue to be heard and been advocated for, but this portion of the proposal is to pass the funds for those immediate services so that some of the ideas, in addition to the mobile food markets, can be done, as well as the delivery services can be done to include within this current proposal. So that's what that sums up in a nutshell for you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good job.
Again, we will be fighting and advocating and coming back for those long-term, sustainable, for those grocery stores, for those owners who are already in the community, or those people that want to open bodegas, urban markets, and sustain those. We are coming back. You see them nodding their head. So we've already talked about this. We're committed, the mayor's office is committed, to working on that. It's no money, it's not the money in the proposal for that, for this, but we will be back at the table, so don't shut us down. Continue to work with us and listen to us as we advocate for your voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job. Thank you. Counselor Graves?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to echo the sentiments of Counselor Jackson. Thank you so much for your words there, Counselor. Proposal 258 has brought to light the critical matter of food insecurities in a way that indicates that a solution is needed now. Something that those of us living on the Far East Side have known for a very long time. There should be no worry nor question about where individuals and families will obtain their next meal. My support of this proposal reflects that I am committed to solving the inadequate food system that exists, and the fact that we're providing an immediate solution was my motivation. But the question before still remains, how do we get to a viable, long-term solution? After talking with residents of District 13, attending meetings, some with the few that are present today, conducting interviews and surveys and learning and brainstorming solutions for the everyday struggles, for example, of small grocery startup Mr. Robert Hurst and A and I Meats and Variety, and listening to input during community meetings, I came away more convinced that it is imperative that we provide a right-now solution while we continue to move the needle forward to find a permanent solution. One interaction with a neighbor in my community that comes to mind was a gentleman on 36th Street in Franklin, who was walking with his family to what is now the closed Walmart on 38th Street in Franklin. He expressed that with the closing of the nearest grocer option, it was going to be even more difficult to who was walking with his family to what is now the closed Walmart on 38th Street in Franklin. He expressed that with the closing of the nearest grocery option, it was going to be even more difficult to walk to get the food to feed his family. With a sweat rag in his hand, he smiled and he said, "Hey, I'll keep walking even further to see that my family gets the food they need." Now, if he can dig in and keep walking to get access to healthy, fresh food for his family, can we keep moving until we find a solution? So this gentleman, my neighbor, is why I support this proposal. Also, there are other merits that are in this proposal that are important to our community. I'm also in support of this proposal because it will bring preventative measures to violence in our community by hiring additional peacekeepers. And finally, this proposal will help individuals have right at their fingertips technology to see if they qualify for more supportive services such as SNAP, et cetera. So while I support this proposal, I cannot ignore the voices that are impacted the most in my neighborhood, my community, District 13. Those limited food options that they want and need and deserve are what's important to me. I'll continue to listen to them and those that speak on their behalf. And I'll be on board here until a solution is found. Thank you.
Thank you, counselors. Are there any additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing one. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to proposal number 258? Sorry, the amendment for proposal 258. I want to ensure that everyone who wishes to speak now knows that you will be speaking to the amendment made by Counselor Jackson, not yet to the proposal 258. So if your comments are related to the, to the amendment made by Counselor Jackson, that is fine. If not, we prefer that you wait until the amendment either passes or does not pass, and we address the full proposal 258. Are we clear? All right, very good. Yes. All right. Do we have a list of names? Please go ahead, ma'am.
My name is Sharonna Moore, and I am here, thank you for having me tonight. I'm here representing my farm at Lawrence Community Gardens. We're at 46th and Post Road. I'm also one of the founding members of the Indiana Black Farmers Co-op. Just to address the amendment that was proposed by Counselor Jackson. I also believe that in our neighborhood, the situation is so detrimental right now to our health that we can no longer wait for the grocery stores to come back. Our job, my job at my farm, and I believe I'm the first in the city to bring that mobile market into our neighborhood to distribute food from our farm directly into the community. Right now, we service Heritage Place Senior Home. We service Fort Ben YMCA. We service Carriage House East. We service Spanish, Spanish Oaks. And we also service Esconasi Grassy Creek. Those are all locations, most of them, that are in the Far East Side community. And we're struggling to receive funds to continue our work. It saddens me to believe that you would give money to Lyft to take people to the grocery store when we're right in the neighborhood feeding our people. This is my third year on the ground running, and I heard that there were some talks about proposing to partner with some other people to bring mobile markets to the neighborhood that I'm already working in. So, I would love to see that amendment funnel more funds into the efforts that are already going on in our community, recognize the good works that's coming out of the community from people like myself who are not taking a salary for the work that we do. Thank you.
Hello. I'm a resident owner in Brentwood, and I see so many kids that are hungry every single day. And I think it's wonderful that our school, our city has got together and they put together breakfast and lunch for those children. But those kids are hungry at night, and they're hungry on the weekends. And we need to do something about it because it spurs crime. If we're going to do something about the crime for the youth, we must make sure that they're fed. We must make sure that they have things to do, that they're engaged. Because that's what creates criminality, is unattended kids. And some parents have to work, and they're still underemployed. So these proposals that you put in this proposition, it's, it, 258, it's necessary. And I'm waiting to see what our next steps are. Because I appreciate, the delivery idea was mine because there are senior citizens, there are elderly, senior citizens, disabled people, and people that have multiple children that live in my community. And they cannot afford to get rides to and from the grocery store. The grocery store is going further and further out. And it's not fair to give money, like the young lady right before me said, to other organizations that are not in the community, working. I don't take credit for none of the stuff I do for the people in my community. I do backpacks. I feed kids. I do a lot of stuff in the community. And it's not because I want recognition for it, it's the right thing to do. If you have it, share it. There are other grocery stores there in the community. Why come we can't open up that old Kroger and everybody get together? We have Hispanic people, we have Asians, we have multiple cultures in our community. We can all work together to support the community, to, to support a grocery store in the community. It's not fair that we take the funds and we go out of our community.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am, now, one thing we missed. We didn't get your name. Did we get your name?
My name is Elizabeth Durden, D-U-R-D-E-N.
Thank you so much.
You're very welcome. I just think that we need to do better.
Good evening, counselors. My name is Paula Barnett. I'm with the EFFI, Economic Freedom Fighters of Indiana. So, the proposal 258, as written, basically proposes to take a lot of money that we could be using on the Far East Side to supplement and to continue the programs that these sisters have been up here and talked about. We have a grocery store that's already there that needs funding. After, so, 258 wants to take monies, put them in a Lyft, drive the customers and the citizens that live there outside of the community to spend somewhere else. All the money is going to corporations. Lyft is a corporation. They don't need any money. Poor people need a place to have groceries that they can access. The grocery store will deliver the food. Yeah, we got Amazon and they coming with the, with the little helicopters bringing food and stuff. You got a brother that can hire people to get in a car and bring grandma some groceries. She can make a phone call to A&amp;I and ask for some groceries and get them brought. Google, who, that tracks every move you make. You get on your phone, you say, "We want pizza." It tells you where all the pizza places is where you are. I need to find a food pantry. It goes by your zip code and tells you where all of that can be located. So I don't understand why we have money for an app that's unnecessary because you can Google it. And if you can't Google it, that means you don't have a smartphone anyway. So the app is not going to be of any use to you. Putting people in a Lyft and lifting money out of an already struggling community to take it somewhere else to the people that are abandoning the community to starve, it makes no sense. We gotta do better than this. Because we're talking about people. You got a temporary program? Thank you. Peace, people.
My name is Alexandra Bishop, and I am a homeowner and member of the community on the east side of Indianapolis. And I am worried about my people because there are, there's grocery stores going out of business back to back. The dollar stores where poor people go to get snacks are going out of business back to back. We have A&amp;I Variety and Meats that needs money. And the money is being put into corporations that do not need it. The Lyft program does not need this money. That money could be put into businesses and farmers who are already helping the community. The Compass program can be replaced by Lyft, I mean by Google. And if you do not have Google, you can easily call two-on-one for the information you need to gain access to whatever you need in your community. All I need is for you counselors to not see this as just writing on paper and see the people it affects personally. I am watching so many people no longer have places to get groceries. And there's one grocery store on the Far East Side that is trying to make it. He, he needs a building. He needs funding for facilities or for equipment. He needs more groceries in his store. A&amp;I has the potential to be bigger and better and grow the community as a whole, creating jobs and creating delivery services for the community. He is trying, and he needs your help. Thank you.
My name's Antonio Lipscomb, and I would like to put this conversation in context. First Samuel's 2 and 8 says, "He has rose, he has rose the poor from the dust and lifted the needy from the ash heap. He has set them with princes and have them inherit a throne of honor. For the, for the foundation of the earth is the Lord's, and on them he has set the world." So my concern is the fact that if the Lord can set the poor amongst the princes, why come the poor is not engaged when it comes to the committees that are making these levels of decisions? And also, and I want to be very clear, that I am against any level of an amendment at this time. I do believe that there needs to be further discussion, and I do want to commend the group for having the discussion of at least examining this topic. However, we do know and understand that this is a situation that is too precious to the community for us to be willing to play games and politics. From my understanding, there is $175,000 that's going toward a food campus. And then, far as the neighborhood championing for 10 people to learn how the problem exists in the system and the community organization, they're trying to get $65,000, I believe. And then also, $200,000 for a mobile truck. This is not where I think we should go, and I think that we are smarter than this. And this is a great opportunity, opportunity for us to invest in the small businesses that already exist in the community like A&amp;I. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rochelle Fogs, and I just want to say I'm fortunate enough that I don't have to deal with some of the problems that have been addressed here. But I would like to invite everyone on this council to go out into those communities. I go through them, and I cannot believe where I live is closer to where everything is flourishing. You have stores just blooming everywhere because I live in the downtown area. And I'm starting to see that these people that come in and move downtown, they look down on me. I've been here for over 30 years. And I'm telling you, it's time for us who have helped build this city to get something back. And part of that is putting businesses in those communities. And I know that by the grace of God, somebody on that committee up there will not just say, "Yes, yes, yes," like I've seen you do all night. But take your time and put yourself in the place of those people that are suffering. Because when you go home tonight and go to bed, I'm sure your kids don't have to deal with that problem. Thank you.
President and council members, my name is Claire Pope. I am a long-term resident of the Far East Side. I am a parent liaison for a innovative IPS school, Phalen Academy. I am also president of the Far East Side Community Council. I would like to stand here before you and say that I am in agreement with the amendment. I want to acknowledge Counselwoman Jackson. She has actually was able to diffuse a situation in our area because of the fact there was no communication and no understanding of this proposal. So we went from wanting to, as you say, kill the proposal, to come with, come up with what I call a win-win scenario. So I ask that you consider amending this. We have other individuals here from our area that also support this. And so we would like for you to take to heart the fact that we are not wasting our time being here tonight, that we mean what we say and we say what we mean. And we hope that you will take that into consideration in your decision-making. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Leela Darden, and I am the vice president of the Far East Side Community Council. As a resident, it's very difficult to stand here and watch some of you all have conversations on the side, fist pumping, laughing. It's not funny. You know, we have a serious situation going on on the Far East Side, and we're here to talk about it. And while we understand what the mobile app is attempting to do, as you said, the shovel-ready projects, we want shovel-ready projects that can help our community right now. And we just don't believe that the answer is the Lyft. While we understand what you're trying to do, we just don't agree with it. And that is why we have the amendment. So please take the time to truly hear our concerns, and like the woman said prior to us, truly understand where we're coming from. There's some, like when you go, there's 20 blocks before there's a reasonable grocery store that people can go to. And if you have a Kroger right around the street or Aldi right across the street, imagine having 20 minutes before you can even get to a grocery store. And the app, when you're saying that it'll tell you when something is open, well, what if nothing is open for 20-plus blocks? How is it going to help us then? So, thank you.
I adore. My name, Ron G. I just want to say, I just got a few points I want to make. Hopefully, I'll get it done in the two minutes. My thing with the app is, I believe that it's, it's just like a lot of money, you know, to take somebody to the grocery store. Obviously, if you don't really have money for food, you probably don't really have a phone. Or, you know, and I believe that we need to kind of implement money management. Because sometimes, you know, I've been broke, so it's sometimes I'll go get my stamps, you know. Be like, forget it, I might go get some stamps. You feel me? Then like a week later, you know, I ain't got no food. You feel me? So I believe that, you know, we need to kind of like implement more programs. And those are the type of programs that we can put at A&amp;I. You know, because he's right there on 38th and Post, Far East Side. You know, since he came out there, you know, he's been a blessing to me. And I'm from the Far East Side, tattered and branded, you feel me? And I love the Far East Side, you feel me? So I just believe that, you know, y'all kind of like looking at it kind of, kind of like different. Because I've been out here for three years. I've fed over thousands of people. Three years, thousands of people, and ain't nobody gave me a dime. So it really don't take a lot of money to give us food, but y'all need to kind of help us more with education, more with, you know, teaching us how to manage our money. You know, that we can't just go jack off everything, you feel me? So that we can have food during the month, you know? And, what else? And also, A&amp;I is already, you mentioned Cleo Bodega. This week, he's sending us a lot of Cleo Bodega. So I think we kind of need to implement him in there. You know, let's try to get him in there, give him a couple bucks, you feel me? And I think we'll, we'll, we'll start out good. Thank y'all.
My name is Jonathan Lawler, and I guess you could say I'm a far, 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 Far East Side resident. I'm here representing Indiana farmers. I'm from Hancock County, but I work in Indianapolis. I actually am not an urban farmer. I actually am not an urban farmer. You know, when we plant tomatoes, we plant them by the thousand count. Robert has been to my farm from A&amp;I. He has picked the produce that he wants. If you want to know what the solution to food insecurity is? Me, farmers, all of us, all of the Indiana farmers. And I have to ask, was the Indiana Farm Bureau involved at all with this plan? Was, was, you know, Indiana grown involved? Cause I can tell you right now, all, which I'm a member of both and I'm friends with members. And I can tell you, we don't want hunger as farmers. And as a farmer, I understand planting seeds. This is not planting seeds. This is broadcasting and hoping a few things pop up. I can show you how to plant seeds. Me and Robert are doing it already. I also work with Flanner House. That beautiful urban farm you see there? We did that and it's intensive agriculture. It's solutions that feed people. When we harvest, we harvest thousands of pounds, because that's what it takes to feed people. And when I'm not feeding, when I can't grow stuff, I can hook Robert up with my suppliers. That way my jalapenos that were slated to go to Cincinnati, they're staying here in Indianapolis, I can promise you that. And when Robert said to me, his peaches were too high, well, I planted thirty peach trees and I ordered four hundred more. Because when the urban folks and the rural farmers can work together, I don't know if that scares you guys. According to people I've talked to, it's scary. But we will change hunger here. And as a farmer, it makes me sick that the greatest agriculture state in America has hunger in its capital.
My name is Dave Minor, I'm here on behalf of Indy Hunger Network, which is a collaboration of leading food assistance organizations like Gleaners, Midwest, Second Helpings and so forth. We are data-based. For ten years now, we've done research on the food systems and we have a long track record of completing improvements. In 2017, we did a random survey of more than eight hundred residents. Well, we found forty-seven thousand people in a given week are going hungry, you heard that before. And the total meal gap was five million meals per year. The survey also found that three-quarters of households missing meals were not using SNAP and food pantries. In short, we could largely eliminate missed meals if everyone got access to the resources that already exist for them. Let me say that again. We could largely eliminate the meal gap just by helping people get access to the resources that already exist. We know the major barriers to our hungry neighbors include information and lack of transportation. The Food Compass program can address the information need. The systems are large and surprisingly complex and they're not easy to navigate. And I'm sorry, but Google can't provide all the answers on this. Thankfully, the needed information resides in the databases of Connect to Help or 2-on-1, but they're not funded and staffed to support telephone calls from two hundred thousand people. Furthermore, when we did a survey, only sixteen percent of residents even knew 2-on-1 existed. That's why Food Compass is a critical innovation for the city. It'll provide information from 2-on-1's database directly to folks in need. Smartphone, dumb phone, no phone, it's a multi-platform approach. The design was developed through a rigorous process and I believe it will work. The hundred and seventy thousand dollars for this is a one-time investment and it will have an immediate effect. And my friends, it will help every neighborhood in the city. And we know that there's hunger everywhere. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Penny Bigelow. Are food deserts an important problem? Yes. Is Proposition 258 the best solution? Maybe in part. Throwing money at this problem is not the best and only solution. For example, one man has a creative, low-cost solution. He's established something called Community Garden Helpers, which donates materials, labor and equipment to help establish and to help already established community gardens prosper. I suggest that you postpone this vote tonight in order to study other low-cost solutions or at least decrease the amount of money allocated to this project. The individual and community partnerships that can be established by community gardens enable people to take pride in their accomplishments and encourage a sense of community and saves money. Further, I suggest you review the budget now, not wait till 2020, and see where you can cut five to 10% out of every budget item. Put the saved money into roads. So people, so people can get to the grocery stores.
Good evening, my name is Tanya Johnson and I'm an eighteen-year congregant, eighteen-year congregant and five-and-a-half-year staff member at Mount Carmel Church who recognizes the dire need to close the food access gap on the far east side. The city approached our church to be a partner on the Lift project because of the work that we've been involved in around addressing food insecurity over the past few years. In addition to providing a food pantry for well over twenty years, we decided to shift the focus to really look at food access around healthy options. And so we started a community garden and over the summer and fall months, we have a monthly farmers market that offers produce at an affordable cost to the community. But one of our goals was to not just address food insecurity by making food accessible, but making it convenient and bringing healthy options closer to home and giving them support that eliminates barriers to reaching healthy food that is accessible. And so the Lift project is not an end-all, be-all. It's not about padding corporations. It's giving families an option that I think people who have transportation take for granted. There are people who couldn't make it here tonight because they don't have transportation. And so this program is not an end-all, be-all. But it is only one strategy to give people who don't have transportation an opportunity to not just have access, but have options. So three of the stores that Lift will be providing rides to is in the immediate community, including A&amp;I. And it also gives an opportunity to go to a grocery store that's nearby, that's not in the immediate community, but it is nearby. Again, giving people who don't have transportation options. And I think that's just, that's something that we often take for granted when we have transportation. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Annie Smith. I live, work, play, worship and serve on the far east side. I am here in support of access through the Lift program to residents who need it. I am here as a voice for my sister, who is an Army veteran, who deals with challenges of mental health and physical health. She uses a cane to get around. If I were not present to take her to the store, I wonder how she would get there. The Lift project is not for Lift to make money. Let's not be blind to who it's gonna serve. And my sister would be one who would utilize a two-dollar round trip to the grocery store. If I were not present, and I just think about all the other people who are in situations where they're dealing with mental health, where they're dealing with physical challenges. That is what is most important. And, and when you really look at it, what's wrong with everybody getting some type of access? And I do agree that we need to take more time and look at sustainability and how things can last. But I also, two and a half years ago, I did a listening tour. I just went and listened to residents on the far east side. I asked a lot of questions, but the one question that I asked that I got a lot of responses from was what does a thriving community look like to you? Those responses included affordable healthcare, quality schools, beautiful parks, beautiful art in our community. A lot of things that we all want, good education for our kids. So I'm here to say I'm in support of having access to grocery stores for those people with those challenges that I talked about.
Hello, I'm Wild Style. Some of y'all know me. I didn't plan to speak today. I'm a former Far East Side resident, I lived there for a while and I'm a Northwest area resident now. But I'm faced with a lot of the same challenges and I'm particularly confused about this Lift app. So while, not, not the Lift app, I'm sorry, the Food Compass app. And so while I was listening here, I went to indyhunger.org and I asked all of y'all to go here and check out the team who put the, the app together. It doesn't look like anybody that I've ever, you know, that I regularly see on the far east side or my community. So I'm trying to figure out where is the cultural competence here to give everybody the education on where to find a food pantry? And is that the best that we can do? We need to, and I understand, I know people are gonna be upset. I know our most, I think everybody's intentions are good, but the road to hell is paved with good intentions. Martin Luther King Jr. said that. We need to dig deeper. We need to start looking to community as the answer. You have somebody that, that's putting their time and their money, their family's money on the line, creating a grocery store over there. You've got Sharona Moore who's working with, with food access. You have Robert with A&amp;I and we seem to overlook them. And we think that people that don't live in the community, don't look like anybody in the community, seem to have the answers to everything that's going on in the community. And we will fail every time. And we will, we'll be talking about this issue twenty years from now, twenty-five years from now. Because it will always be a food desert, we'll never solve it without community help. So please, listen to the community.
John Moore. I think the amendment softens it for many people because many of us were against it because this is a persistent problem in our city. And as many of the speakers have addressed, that the solutions aren't being, coming from people that are affected by it. Some of the speakers have talked about the people who really have food insecurity. I'm probably here speaking for people who just don't have the right level of food access. And that's something that our city needs to think about. Because the guy that kept saying he was gonna keep walking to feed his children, you know, he might just walk right out of Indianapolis and move to another city. So this persistent problem that we have, we have to work at solving it. And your amendment makes people think that, yes, this is a stopgap measure, this is like a pilot program. And so I'm just here to plead with, we need to get better data out of this funds that we're going to spend. Because we all pretty much have this feeling, not all, but many of us have a feeling that the people, if you dig down into the proposal, who are receiving the money, they just really don't look like most of the people who have a problem with food insecurity or food hunger. I've got about ten more minutes, so I just want to say, can't waste it. This is a problem that has been around for a while and it's gonna stay around if the policymakers don't open it up to people who have the problem. Thank you.
Mr. President, Mr. President, Mr. President.
Just a moment, Counselor Gray.
Mr. Merritt, are you here as a citizen of the east side?
Yes, sir.
Or are you here campaigning?
I'm here as a citizen. Thanks for asking. My name is Jim Merritt, I'm here to talk about this measure. I think we all agree that food insecurity, food disparity is something that is concerning all, all of our townships, all nine townships in Marion County. And when I brought 2-on-1 to the state of Indiana, we've spoken about 2-on-1 tonight. And it's a shame that it's just sixteen percent. When I, one of my visions for 2-on-1 was for a situation such as this, this crisis that we're going through. And because it's sixteen percent, maybe we ought to spend more money on making people aware because everybody has a telephone. Maybe not everyone has a smartphone. But thank you all for serving us in Marion County and the City-County Council. But my, my, my point though is this is out of budget. It's not sustainable and it's not comprehensive. And Counselor Lakeisha Jackson, congratulations on your amendment. I think we're moving toward it, but I do believe that we need to bring food into the community rather than taking people out of it. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Amy Harwell. I live in, on the east side. And I have a couple of things to ask before I say what I need to say. I am for the proposal, but there is a little question I wanted to ask. We talk about doing it online and all that. What about the people, the seniors, the ones who don't know anything about the internet? I have a flip phone. I barely know how to use even the flip phone. I just have it for basic emergency. What do they do? That's my question I need and I need an answer. Because we, they can't text, they don't know how to do it. They don't know how to do it. So I think when we're doing things, and I've learned that the hard way, that when we're doing things, we need to think of the person who doesn't know, who don't have the intelligence of how to go find a computer and do this. Because there are so many seniors, and when I say seniors, I mean seniors, that just barely know how to use a telephone. And they're the ones that are starving the most with the children. I am a part of a veterans' organization, the American Legion. And I can tell you that there is maybe eighty percent of veterans in this city that is starving, live on the street, don't have the next meal. And I work with them every day. There is Safeway in Martindale-Brightwood, which personally, part of this money, to be honest, need to go and help them to clean it up, teach them how to serve proper food for the community.
Members of the community and our council, first and foremost, I do want to say thank you for bringing to light a topic that impacts every single person in this room, out on the streets, our seniors, our future generations. I think there's a couple of things that need to be reiterated regarding the proposal that's before us. Counselor Jackson, thank you for putting those amendments before. Because that is the first steps to making sure, as we have this large crowd with us today, that the community is being a part of the process. This is not the time where we will just end and say this is the end-all, be-all. But let's continue to move the needle forward. I do like that the amendment has been brought. Coming from a family, I've actually now, we're going into fourth generation of groceries in my family. Actually, with Mr. Hearst, I, my father being down in New Mexico, he was quickly willing to pick up the phone to offer services to Mr. Hearst. I think it's also important that we see the intersection. We passed this today, so we know that the members that don't have the adequate access to get to the stores can get there. to get to the stores can get there. But in also making sure we don't see more doors close. So again, just drilling down to the point, I think it's very important. Part of also the work in the community was actually seeing, and one of our hardest hit areas of 46218 actually opened up a fresh food market. With those doors opening, that actually allowed the federal food desert classification to be wiped away. We have hope, we have models, but again, I just really want to make sure that the means of the support of our neighbors that are doing the work are being heard, but most importantly, we do not forget about those that are needing transportation today. Thank you.
Good evening, City County Council members. A pleasure to be here. I'm here in support of proposal 258. I'm the president of the Devon's Community Association. About a year or so ago, when we got the news that Kroger was closing in Devon Plaza, we were devastated. We needed a grocery store, so many around us that retired, those who live on public assistance, but even that, we got a lot of middle class, we got just a really diverse neighborhood that just really needed a grocery store. I like this proposal, one, because it starts the conversation. It starts connecting with someone that's going to make a difference. It starts to, we hear a lot about we want to take a public entity and try to work on a private space, but we need some partnership there. What I mean by that is, a private owner owns the Devon Plaza. The government can't come in there and do anything about that plaza. It belongs to, it belongs to a private owner. So, but I like this proposal because it works with other options and it creates a conversation about how to make a difference in our community. It's not the best, but it's certainly, I applaud the mayor and the council, all of you bipartisan, I hope, to make it, to make this proposal come into reality. Decisions like this are not easy, but I can tell you that you'll be on the right side of history in terms of trying to move this in the right direction. Thank you.
My name is Danell Howard. Two quotes and then I'll read a statement here. There's a statement, a quote, a proverb that says, "Whatever you do for me, if you don't do it with me, you actually do it to me." And I think this proposal is an attempt to do something for people without the people and now it feels like it's been done to the people. There's another statement that says, "If you want to go fast, go by yourself. If you want to go far, go together. Don't go fast by yourself. Go far with all of us." Thank you for the opportunity to address this august body. As a resident of Indianapolis, I and others, to include the Economic Freedom Fighters of Indiana, are against proposal 258 being passed in its original form. Proposal 258 is preparing to give our tax money, $780,000 via proposal 258 to Lyft Corporation and other private interests outside of the Far East Side community. No one has been able to explain how taking this money outside of the community will build something sustainable for, sustainable for the community. Cobbling together with taxi rides, community gardens of limited size and scope, and food pantries cannot sustain the whole community, only a fortunate few. A full-service, fresh grocer helps everybody. Proposal 258, as currently written, must be amended to truly benefit the whole community. 258 would take money out of the community that is coming into, taking money, taking money out of the community that is coming into it. EFFI has attended, has attended and participated in several Far East Side community meetings and events where everyone has, was tasked with bringing back ideas and plans to subsequent meetings. As a result of these gatherings, the, we, so hold up, as a result of these gatherings, we crafted a replacement proposal that was emailed to each of you, the majority of the community members, and each meeting was attended and voted to keep the money in the community.
Pastor Howard.
Okay. All right, let me sit down. Bless you.
Bless you. Thank you.
You know, I'm starving right now. Get it? But I don't think there's any reason to criminalize how somebody gets food. When you make this situation a part of public safety, it denotes some kind of criminal function. So for people to get food, it's a personal thing. And I know that some people try to have a grocery operation, but you cannot compete against Kroger's, you cannot compete against Walmart because you don't have any distribution. So that's a false hope. What needs to happen is, and I shift gears here for a minute, our money, this money, needs to be appropriated for a different purpose. We are having changing in our immigration laws, Mr. President, and we may not able to be able to get immigrant labor anymore. So the city of Indianapolis should be training people to do this work that's being done on our infrastructure and everything else. We had a proposal that we introduced to you, Mr. President, to give us room and board for 500 apprentices. Andrew Mullen said he would go along with it on this criminal justice center and also on Tech 16 and the Riverwalk program. We're going to need these people to be trained. This is the time right now to appropriate funds to not only get these young men and women into apprenticeship programs, but also to offer stability, which means having room and board while they're learning their trades. That's the only way we're going to move out of this situation. If we keep on placating unrighteousness, doing the things that are bad production, I perceive as bad production, trying to criminalize food, we're never going to work. We need to have something more progressive in this city. We know we need the labor force, we need to train it right now.
Hey, how's it going? My name is Matt Davis. I'm an urban farmer by trade. I've been worked in every single aspect, the local food, whether it's urban garden to urban farm. That gentleman you saw, John Lawler, I did the largest urban farm in the state twice in the same season with that guy. So I've been on both sides of this issue, people who are here against it, people who are here for it. I also am a native near East Side resident, also East Side resident. I went to Arlington High School from Oak Tree Apartments and Amber Woods Cooperative. So I know about the East Side, this issue hits home for me in a lot of different ways. Also, people on both sides of this issue tonight, I've worked with all of them, you know, arguably all of them. And so I have a really important insight, but aside from, I'm not going to do too much tonight, but I just wanted to say, I know the chairperson said he wanted to address the amendment, but I wanted to say something to the council. I am in support of the bill, although I do hold some of the reservations that you hear from some people who are disrupting or resisting tonight, which, which, which I think are still important. Oh, excuse me. Again, I've worked with Latifah, I've worked with a lot of these people, right? So I think that they are important considerations and the council, and this is likely to pass, this bill is likely to pass, and I'm saying that we can use this opportunity, the unrest in the community, the actual voices in the community, because those are two different things, but we can use the best of what's here tonight, right, to come up with another proposal for fortifying the local food economy somehow, right? This doesn't all have to be all at once, right? Also, the people who are in resistance to the bill, this is not exactly the best approach. Also, I want to say to the people who are organizing against this bill, I do appreciate organizing of any sort, but I will say this, you should be ashamed of yourself, I can't even look back, should be ashamed of yourself to align with Merritt. You should be ashamed of yourself of lining with Merritt, aligning with Merritt and using Food Access and the people who are most affected on the Far East Side as a political crowbar.
And I have to follow that, right? Good evening, everyone. My name is Shelley Covington. I am a community auntie.
Just a moment.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Bob.
Please continue.
Ready? Okay. Good evening. My name is Shelley Covington. I am a community auntie and I am here on behalf of A&amp;I. When Robert opened his store, he was vandalized twice. None of y'all showed up. The grassroots were there, myself, Ross Foundation, Ron G., Pastor Danell Howard, and a few others. After we got him back on track, we brought in manpower, we brought in money, we had fundraisers to help him get back on track, then this proposal came out, he was not included. That was a problem because he's right there in the heart of the matter, trying to do his best with his own finances and with finances that we, the community, were offering to him to keep the doors open. Then when the Walmart closed, now all of a sudden we got to get AI in the proposal, we got to make this thing happen, we got to include them. He should have been included from the start. That's a problem. But y'all don't live there, so it's okay. So now here we are. Robert should have been included from the start, you've included him now, and now my question is, just how far are you willing to go to finance for him to stay there? Because Walmart's gone. Robert's the last best hope as far as community, in that community. He lives there, he works there, he wants to be there. But if you're not going to help him, that's cool. We'll remember that in November when it's time to vote. Thank you.
My name is Whitley and I go by Winwin James. First, I'd like to say that there's been a huge temperament issue that I've seen with the council. These people have taken their time out of their day to come here and speak to you. And some of you, Mr. Robinson, were laughing. It's not a laughing matter. Hunger is not a laughing matter. So I wanted to first address that. The second thing I would like to address is there should be bipartisanship on both sides, Matt Davis.
Okay, excuse me, ma'am. Ma'am, this is not called out.
We're going to talk about the bill.
You will address the amendment or you will be silent?
Counsel, there should be bipartisanship on both sides. So you guys should come together and try to do what's best for the community, even if it's in your district or not, because it's about the city of Indianapolis as a whole. People over politics and people for policies that work. Thank you.
I'm a Black Indy Live, independent news source. I've had the privilege, the last month or so, to work with a lot of people who are very deeply involved in this proposal, people from all over the community, people not just from the Far East Side. We've been getting together consistently for over a month or so. People have been putting their time, their energy, their efforts. We've been fortunate enough to actually meet with some counselors. Credit to Ms. Lakeisha Jackson for putting out this amendment. Me and her have had some colorful exchanges, but I do appreciate her stepping forward. We've met with some counselors who have not been as receptive or, you know, have kind of put aside some of the concerns, but you know, that's what it is. It seems that this proposal is going to happen because there are things at play that are beyond the control. It seems some corporate interests, such as Kroger and Lyft, pockets might be in line. I can't put anything out there, but what I will say is, the people we have met with, the community, we have felt that we have been lied to, we've been intentionally misled. I've had counselors in charge of this bill look me and other people in our faces and lie to us about certain elements or fang like they were ignorant when their names are on it and there should be no ignorance beyond this hunger, which is a community of Food Access groups that Indianapolis is number one in the country for food deserts in large cities. We've heard people talk about solutions and what they said the data provides, but if a simple look will show that there is no data that shows that taking people out of their communities to spend money elsewhere instead of investing that money within the communities is in any way, shape, or form a sustainable type of solution. And if certain counselors would have done their due diligence to look into some of this research, we wouldn't need an amendment tonight because it would have been passed probably in a way that's more acceptable and will help more people out. But here we are right now, what I will say is, since this is election year and a lot of you are paying attention or trying to get reelected, you should take notice of the people who are here right now. Because we are unhappy, we will no longer allow you to lie and mislead us about our community. Have a good day.
All right, very good. Our next, I'm trying to think now, we have an amendment on the floor.
Mamota Adabo, Dan Goldbluff, and Joyce L. Moore.
Point of order, Mr. President.
Counselor Robinson.
Are we still speaking to the amendment? Are we?
We should be speaking only to the amendment.
So we need to vote on the amendment and then the full proposal is amended?
Correct.
Thank you.
If anyone wants, anyone of that list, still wishes to speak on the amendment?
I was speaking to the amendment.
As I said earlier on, we were speaking to the amendment. Unfortunately, I think a number of individuals had indicated something other than that, but right now, we're speaking to the amendment. All right, very good. The other two, please.
I wanted to speak to the full proposal. I thought that's what I was signing.
Dan Goldbluff.
All right, very good. We've had, we've heard comments. Are there additional comments from counselors on the amendment for proposal 258? Counselor Jackson.
Thank you. Thank you for everybody who made their comments either for or against proposal 258. My role again, that I tried to do is to mediate and bring some of what the community wanted. I couldn't get everything, but tried to bring some of what the community and advocate wanted to this body in this amendment. And then there are some things in this amendment as far as the mobile food markets. So for those who are doing the urban gardens and who are doing that, we will be looking for partners as part of this food mobile market. And as far as the home deliveries too, as far as the seniors, if we could figure out how to get them to dial the number when we create that instead of texting, then if they could dial a number from their flip phone, that may help as well. So again, this is not the end-all on this. Did not want to see the money not go to the community in some form. And again, that we still will come back to the table and somebody said the 20, not wait to 2020. The budget for 2020 starts in August. So we will start deliberating after the mayor introduces his budget mid-August. It votes on in mid-October. I encourage and applaud and encourage you all to be in that process so that we could talk about those line item budgets and long-term sustainability. That's when it, that's when you need to do it. So how you showed up tonight, when we have those committee meetings about budget and you talk about supporting local grocery stores and farmers' markets like A&amp;I, you need to be at those hearings. The hearings are the ones that you get and have influence on the budget. If you want to talk to me more afterwards about what that looks like, I'm willing to do that. But again, I do understand your frustrations. I live on the Far East Side, I live off of Post Road. So I've seen it and I've heard you all, but again, the point of my amendment was to not allow some of this that will help some people go totally out because the money's going to be used, period, you all. But to allow us an avenue to start and move the needle and then hold our body and the mayor's office and the mayor accountable to coming up with sustainable options and solutions and line items in the 2020 budget that starts mid-August. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just very briefly like to, as has been echoed in the room tonight, thank Counselor Jackson for her efforts on this. I have found her to be very easy to work with us on this issue. This amendment, like the proposal itself, may not be perfect in many ways, but it is a start in the right direction. I was prepared tonight to possibly offer an amendment to make a few changes myself and after hearing Counselor Jackson's very well-written amendment, I see absolutely no reason to belabor things any longer. I wholeheartedly support her amendment and I encourage my colleagues to join me in voting yes on Counselor Jackson's amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Are there additional comments from counselors on the amendment to proposal 258? All right, hearing none. All those in favor? Let's go to the boards. The amendment passes 23 to 1. Now, are there additional comments on proposal 258 as amended? No comments from counselors? Is there anyone in the room with an interest in proposal 258 as amended? Yes, that has not already spoken. Yes, that has not already spoken.
See how they play games with you? Nah, I don't. You see the games. This is supposed to be a meeting for the public, but he's shutting down the public. This is supposed to be a help to the community, but they shutting down the community.
Mr. Reverend Jabu, I would like if you would start your comments, please.
I'm bored. You don't think I done started?
All right, very good.
Yeah, my comments is rolling. I am concerned of the lack of humanity that's being shared by these people up here that's taking a vote. You talking about a situation where it's that you're taking money out of a community and you know Econ 101, if you take money out of a community, you destroy that community. And I can't believe that you and you and you and you and you and you were sitting there talking about you trying to help the community, taking part in destroying it. You are a threat to humanity and a traitor to the people on the East Side. And I'm telling you right now, if y'all vote for that November, and most of my voting is being Democrat. Who's running against you? Who's running against you? You can no longer take my vote for granted.
Good evening. I am the Reverend Shonda Nicole Gladon. I'm the CEO of Good to the Soul, and I stand as a clergy participant in faith in Indiana. I first want to invite all of you to just take a deep breath and let you know that I am praying for each of you. The decisions that you make here are not made easily, and the work that you do is not work that you do in vain. So thank you for all of your endeavors. It is rather unfortunate that proposal 258 tethers $120,000 in character one for two peacekeepers focused on juvenile referrals, and additional $780,000 in character three for the various food assistance programs that many have spoken in favor and/or against tonight. I stand this evening to invite the council to take another look at the proposal, and in the event, there is a tabling of the consideration of the total 900,000 requested by the Office of Public Health and Safety. Please do not table the portion of the proposal to provide funding for two peacekeepers focused on juvenile referrals. Right now, right now, four peacekeepers, peacemakers work with at-risk teens so that they stay safe and out of jail. The first ones were hired last summer, and they are assigned to different areas of the city to bring resources directly to our youth before they become victims or suspects of gun violence. Over the course of the last three years, our team representing people of faith from all walks of life here in Marion County has met with Mayor Hogshead, Mr. Babcock, Chief Roach, and various other members of this council to bring these two peacekeepers and the necessary technical assistance to continue neighborhood outreach. In the midst of this robust and very necessary conversation surrounding the food assistance programs, please do not miss this opportunity to add to this corps of peacemakers who are making a difference in curbing violence in our city. Thank you so much this evening, and God bless you all.
Hello, my name is Joyce Moore. And my son and I created a social enterprise called Urban Patch to address the food issue back in 2011. Albert Einstein said, "The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results." This proposal to me is the embodiment of that. We need programs that empower, that puts jobs in our neighbor, in disinvested neighborhoods. We need a new way to develop our communities and embrace the community inclusively and so that we actually have a say in the quality of life where we live in place. We don't need our tax dollars going to support businesses that left our communities. We don't need transportation programs funded to get us to the store periodically to shop for food with a long shelf life because we have to shop on when we can get there provided by that transportation. We don't need to replicate programs that time after time have failed. Let's try something new. Let's deal with the problems that actually caused these food deserts. Government investment and policies that are not distributed equally to the poor and minority communities is the issue. We need walkable communities, programs that encourage that to happen, and we need for you to be accountable to the people that put you in office and to spend our tax money in a way that's gonna actually benefit us in place.
Madam Clerk, is that the, was that the last name on the list? All right, very good. Fellow counselors, any additional comments on proposal 258 as amended? Counsel Fanning.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to everyone who came out tonight. I'm looking forward to supporting this. I'm even more looking forward to getting some metrics on performance and to see how this goes initially as a pilot program. There is tremendous, I think, potential upside here for both the peacekeeping program and for the four distinctive food insecurity programs, and it will be, I just greatly anticipate seeing how that, what the true impact is, because hopefully it's a very small investment for a very large return. Thank you.
Good. Additional comments? Counsel Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move proposal 258 as amended. Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. Additional comments? Counsel Shreve.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was a no on the amendment, not the spirit of the amendment. I'll be a no vote on this tonight. Some of my colleagues and Paul Babcock earlier characterized this kind of complicated proposal as being immediate, offering immediate solutions, ready to be put to work tomorrow, even as it's being shovel-ready. It's not. It's half-baked. It's, this is not gonna fix things, and this is not the best way to spend $900,000 of our money. And for that reason, I'm not gonna support it.
All right, additional comments from counselors? All right, saying none, we'll go to the board to vote. Motion carries 20 to 4. Refer to Public Works Committee Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 259 approves the additional appropriations totaling $7,860,670 in the 2019 budget of the Department of Public Works Transportation General Fund for the road and infrastructure projects and environmental cleanup services supported by revenue transfer from the city's rainy day fund. Director Dan Parker and Nicole Hewlett, CFO for the Department of Public Works, read through the proposal. Ms. Hewlett stated that they are requesting additional appropriations in the amount of $7,860,670 with the Transportation General Fund. $5 million will go to character four to finance design, construction, and inspection of capital projects for the engineering division, and $2,860,670 will go to character three to fund the cost of the environmental cleanup services. Counsel Gray moved, seconded by Counsel Oliver, to send proposals, proposal 259 to the full council that do pass recommendation. That motion carried by a vote of nine to zero, and I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Any comments from counselors?
Mr. President.
Counsel Simpson.
Is the Director Parker in the building?
Director, could you come forward?
Just a simple question. What kind of cleanup are we talking about? Is something in my district or people or just, I didn't quite, I didn't, oh, I mean, you can tell me. Go ahead.
Counselor Simpson, Dan Parker, Director of Public Works. The cleanup is related to a park in Counselor Muscari's district, Sandorf Park, which was found contaminated, and we've been working with the Indiana Department of Environmental Management on a cleanup plan that's been submitted and approved, but Indy Parks is working on further trying to make sure that we can still put a new park over there at Sandorf.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Any additional comments or questions from counselors? All right, saying none. Is there anyone in the room with an interest in proposal 259? All right, saying none. And if there are no additional comments from counselors, let's go to the board to The proposal carries 24 to zero. There is no business under special orders, unfinished business, so we'll now proceed to special orders final adoption. Proposal number 250, refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee, Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 250 authorizes a final ordinance for multifamily housing revenue bonds for new regency against Peak Park LLC in aggravated principal amount not to exceed $19 million to finance a portion of the cost of acquisition, design, construction, rehab, improvements, and equipment existing apartment buildings located in District 23 containing 304 residential rental units and related facility. Jared Brown, Managing Director, gave a brief presentation and answered counselors' questions. There will be an investment of $35,000 per unit. In addition, this project will include replacement of mechanical systems. Many units will be renovated to be ADA accessible. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of nine to two, with Counselors Holiday and Maury casting a negative vote. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right, saying none, we'll go to the board for our vote. Motion carries 21 to 3. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 251, refer to Metropolitan Economic Development Committee, Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 251 approves a statement of benefit of FedEx Supply Chain, Inc., an applicant of a tax abatement for property located in an economic revitalization area. A brief presentation was given. This project will include 225 net new permanent full-time jobs. The approximate average wage is $16.07. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 11 to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right, saying none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 252, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 252 approves an abatement to the declaratory resolution and redevelopment plan for the North Post Road redevelopment area. Emily Mack, Director of the Department of Metropolitan Development, gave a brief presentation and answered counselors' questions. The Town and Terrence Apartments are immediately adjacent to the Oak Tree Apartments, which are also being redeveloped. Of the 222 units, more than half are empty, and on November 20, 2013, the city filed a nuisance case against Town and Terrence. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of 11 to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Counsel Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll just ask my colleagues to support this. Talking to administration, we just felt that it was best to go back and include Town and Terrence in the original proposal that did the redevelopment for the North Post Road because of the crime, because of the bodies being found, because of the condition and the state of it, that really that probably should have been included the first time with all the legal battle that was going on. Initially was decided not to, but now to make sure that we have a plan and action going forward, it's best it was decided to go ahead and revise the amendment to include Town and Terrence in the redevelopment. And I urge our support, and I urge my colleagues to support it as well. Thank you.
Very good. Any additional comments on proposal 252? All right, saying none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 253, refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 253 approves and ratifies the declaratory resolution of the Metropolitan Development Commission for the near-south Gateway Economic Development Area and creates the South Meridian Allocation Area. Emily Mack, Director of DMD, and Jeff Hayser gave a brief presentation and answered counselors' questions. Director Mack shared that the economic development area can be a way to further advance planned projects and initiatives. This project will include infrastructure improvements, including drainage, potential new sidewalks, increased bike and pedestrian options, potential lighting and beautification projects. The project has an approximate budget of $3 million. Counsel Shreve moved and seconded by Counsel Adamson to amend proposal number 253. The motion to amend the proposal carried by a vote of 11 to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there additional comments from counselors? All right, saying none, we'll proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 260, refer to Rules and Public Policy Committee.
Thank you. Fellow counselors here. I was moving this along, as you understand.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 255 amends chapters 361 and 103 of the code regarding litter. Counselor Jackson presented the amendment and answered counselors' questions. She stated that this will allow the Department of Public Works to issue tickets for violations and reinforce the litter codes. Counselor Jackson moved and seconded by Counsel Adamson to amend proposal number 255. The motion carried by a vote of 11 to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Counsel Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have amendment for proposal 255, 2019. Basically, we left off the fee, and in order for it to be lawful, we have to include it. So we left it off in the original amendment, so I'd like to read that at this time. Mr. President, I move to amend proposal 255, 2019, to add a new section five and renumber current sections five, six, and seven by deleting the language that is double-stricken through and adding the double underlying language that is highlighted in portions as it reads. below. Section 5, Chapter 131, Article 5 of the Revised Code of Consolidated City and County Regarding Schedule of Code provisions and penalties hereby is amended by adding the language that is underlined to read as follows. Section, code Section 361-107, license or permit administrator fee for abatement of litter, maximum allowed fee is $288, and Mr. President, I so move.
The amendment's been properly moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, let's go to the board to vote on the amendment to proposal 255. Amendment passes 24 to 0. Well, counselors, are there any comments on proposal 255 as amended? Seeing none, go to the board to vote. Proposal 255 as amended. Motion carries 24 to 0. Proposal 260, Rules and Public Policy Committee, Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 260 amends Chapter 151, Article 11 of the code regarding duties of the Ethics Committee. Proposal number 260 streamlines processes regarding the review of ethics standards, calling for an Ethics Committee meeting only event that a committee member proposes such a change to the chair. Counsel McQuillan moves, seconded by Counsel McHenry, to send proposal number 260 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. That vote carried by 8 to 0. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Are there any comments from counselors? Counsel McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. This proposal came out of a conversation that Counsel Jackson and I and others have had in the past, where we found some superfluous language in the code regarding the timing and meeting of Ethics Committee. I think there's only been one Ethics Committee meeting in the last seven years that I can remember, and a little cleanup of the code is going to just make it more streamlined. Again, my appreciation to Counsel Jackson for working on this, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Very good. Any additional comments? Counsel Jackson.
Thank you, Minority Leader McQuillan, for working with me on this, and also so we could be transparent and make sure that we meet the code, because in the code, it says that we're supposed to meet if, to determine whether or not change has been made, and I think we've been doing that more verbally, and we just wanted to make sure that we clean that up to make sure we were meeting what the code was saying, since there was not business, and that we're not wasting taxpayer dollars meeting if we don't need to. So, that's kind of sums it up. So, thank you, Mr. President.
Any additional comments from counselors? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the board for our vote. Motion carries 24 to 0. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 272, refer to Rules and Public Policy Committee, Counsel Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 272 amends Chapter 441 of the code with regard to traffic control for electric scooters on sidewalks and greenways. Counsel to the counsel, Ms. Kim, stated that the ordinance prohibits the operation of motor vehicles on sidewalks because electric foot scooters are considered motor vehicles. Within the ordinance, they are currently prohibited from operating on sidewalks. She stated that as of July 1, 2019, a new state law will exclude electric foot scooters from the definition of motor vehicles, as well as requiring local authorities to pass an ordinance if they wish to prohibit electric foot scooters from operating in areas where bicycles may be operated. She stated the proposal 272 amends the ordinance to prohibit electric foot scooters from operating on sidewalks, greenways, and any pedestrian or multimodal path that is paved or unpaved in the city. That is the hardest to read that I've ever had to do on this council. I've actually got an amendment tonight, though. Mr. President, if I might, I move to amend Section 2, renumber Sections 4 through 6, and to add a new Section 4 to proposal 272 by deleting the language that is double-stricken through and adding the double underlying language in the highlighted portions as is indicated on the amendment that counselors have at their desks, rather than me reading through it. Mr. President, I so move.
The motion to amend has been moved and seconded. Are there comments from counselors? Counselor Shreve.
I raise a question. I had a constituent reach out to me just before we gathered here who was concerned about e-assist bicycles. I've never been on an e-assist bicycle, but he was concerned that they would be lopped in with the electric foot scooters and therefore prescribed from being on trailways and paths. Is there anything in here that would cast e-assist bicycles into the same category?
Mr. President, I defer to the council.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel Shreve, no, they're not including this ordinance, electric foot, electric bicycle.
And any additional questions on the proposed amendment? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the board to vote on the amendment. All right, the motion to amend carries 24 to 0.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move proposal number 272 for adoption.
Second.
The motion's been properly moved and seconded to proposal 272 as amended. Any additional comments from counselors? Seeing none, we'll go to the board to vote. The motion carries 24 to 0 on proposal 272 as amended. There is no business under special service district councils, and there is no business under new business, and so therefore, the next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. The docketed agenda for this meeting of council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Counsel McQuillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment. By Counsel Adamson, in memory of Marie Lawhorn Carmen. By Counsel Ostley, in memory of Eva Moses Core and David Nolan. By Counsel Cordy, in memory of Carol Fisher, Jan Die, Alberta Schock, Diana Elaine De Wester, Clifton J. Durham Jr., and Teresa Osborne. By Counsel Lewis, in memory of Ebenezer Jackie Smith. By Counsel Harris, in memory of Charles Cox. By Counsel Wester, in memory of Robert Sowers. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named. I respectfully ask the support of fellow counselors. I further request that the motion be made a part of the permanent record of this body and the letter bearing the council seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counsel McQuillan. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and the requests are so ordered. And hearing no further motions, we are adjourned.